We were set up to demand a world-class, fully-integrated and accessible, publicly-owned and accountable public transport network for everybody in our city. So I'm joined here today by loads and loads of our supporters. It's great to see such a great turnout today. And two of the campaign committee members, Brenda and Ruth, who I hope will be able to contribute to the discussion. But before we get started, I just wanted to do a bit of participation with you. I was wondering if the committee would indulge me in putting your hand up if you are in a household or live in a household that has access to a car?
Miss Harrison, I'm not sure that that's entirely appropriate. I'll allow it one time and we'll see where we go, but that's it. And then you'll need to get on and you're taking time out of your 10 minutes.
Could you put your hand up if you live in a household that has access to a car? So the majority of the committee then. So I'm sure you'll be aware that the majority of people who live in Glasgow don't have access to a car, and including most of our campaign members and supporters. For us, public transport is often only the only option for getting around. That is why the issues raised by this petition are so important to so many people across our city region who are being failed by the present privatised public transport system. That's why this petition has gained so much support over the last two years, now signed by 10,727 people demanding action from you, our representatives at the council. So I don't want to dwell on it too much, but it has been an incredibly frustrating process for us to even get to the stage where we've been invited to speak to you today. Our petition was handed in originally on the 11th of May 2018, so eight months ago, not the 9th of October as it says in your papers. And our aim when handing it in in May was to kick-start a debate on what new powers our city region must be granted in order to sort out the mess that our public transport is in ahead of the Scottish Parliament's consultation on the Transport Bill which ran last summer. But we were told that the petition wasn't eligible because there was an ongoing consultation on public transport. Meanwhile, that consultation failed to give its feedback by the 31st of August as had been promised. Meanwhile, the council submitted an extremely weak response to the Scottish Parliament's consultation which didn't acknowledge or reflect our campaign's demands. And meanwhile, most can discuss the terms of that partnership after this presentation. But the good news is, we are, we very much welcome much of the Connectivity Commission's first report which was published by the council in November 2018. This report clearly articulates that poor public transport like we have in Glasgow is a matter of social, environmental and economic injustice which is exacerbating the huge inequalities in wealth and in health that we have in our city and preventing a third of our population, those dependent on overpriced, poorly-planned or non-existent bus routes, from properly participating in the city's economy. And it is excluding disabled people altogether, as much of our public transport network is completely inaccessible. Over the last 10 years, millions of miles of bus routes have been cut in Scotland by private bus companies. This list supplied to me by SPT just before Christmas shows more than 1,000 route cancellations across Strathclyde since 2009 which have affected many of our campaign's supporters. I got involved in this because the number 42 bus, which I used to use regularly, was cancelled by First in 2015 because it wasn't seen as commercially viable. And both Brenda and Ruth here have been affected by the change of route of the number 4A which now no longer says their community at all. And this same story is being repeated time and time again across Scotland as a result of our broken privatised model. And on top of that, bus fares have skyrocketed 18% in the last five years according to Transport Scotland's statistics. And First Bus put their fares up twice in 2018, so a single now costs £2.40 which is 40% more than the £1.70 it costs in Edinburgh where they have publicly-owned Lothian buses. We don't think that is fair at all. So people are being priced off and ripped off our bus network. And many people are being forced to buy cars that they just simply cannot afford to run which is pushing them further into debt and causing an environmental disaster. Most of our city's air pollution and carbon emissions come from transport. And transport is the only sector which has actually increased its emissions since the Scottish Parliament passed its Climate Act in 2009. Last October, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change published a stark warning demanding rapid and far-reaching changes to our transport network over the next 12 years before 2030 in order to prevent climate breakdown. So for Glasgow, that means shifting huge numbers of people out of their cars and onto public transport. And the only way we're going to do this is by hugely improving the service and reducing the fares. So we have to start seeing public transport as a business which is there to make a profit for private shareholders. We should see public transport as an essential strategic public service which helps us achieve our city's social, environmental and economic goals. In this report, very well thumbed, Building a World Class Bus System for Britain, which was published by Transport for Quality of Life in 2016, it shows exactly how and why we can achieve this through highly-regulated bus franchises and through public ownership. This report highlights the stark fact that running our public transport through this broken privatised model is costing us as taxpayers and as passengers more for the terrible service that we're being given. Nearly £300 million a year in public subsidies goes to Scotland's private bus companies. This report shows that cities and towns across Europe are bringing their buses back into public ownership or remunicipalising them in order to save money and to provide a better service for their citizens, including our city's twin city in France, Marseille. This report shows that if all the buses outside London were remunicipalised and run in the Lothian model as a public operator, £506 million of public money could be saved every year. First Glasgow are running our buses into the ground which is also a huge safety concern. Yesterday, Ruth here was at the Traffic Commissioner's office in Edinburgh at Public Inquiry to investigate whether First's poor maintenance was the cause of a number of bus crashes that happened before Christmas. We want to see a public transport system for the Strathclyde region like the system that's used in Munich, in the Munich region, which is highlighted in this report, which operates to the principle one network, one timetable, one ticket, which offers seamless journeys for its citizens to get wherever they need to go. So Munich has a publicly-owned and accountable transport authority which is responsible for planning the region's transport network so that all transport, train, bus, subway, work together in harmony. And then they have a separate publicly-owned and accountable operator running all of the services. And last year Munich was voted the number one most livable city in the world in the Monocle magazine survey, and it's no surprise that Glasgow wasn't in the list at all. But we can and we should be able to achieve this if we have your support. And this issue is so important that we cannot afford to get it wrong. So I just want to finish up by summarising what we would like you to do. So what we'd like you to do is what we've been asking for all along, and that is for Glasgow City Council to get behind the campaign and to involve us in decisions and strategic plans from now on. So firstly, we want you to support an amendment to the Transport Bill so that a publicly-owned bus company could run both commercial and non-commercial routes. If we don't get that through the Parliament, then Glasgow will be denied the opportunity and the chance to build a public bus company like Lothian Buses. And then we are asking you to seize the franchising powers that will be granted in the Transport Bill so that we can properly plan and regulate our public transport network. Bus partnerships have failed and will continue to fail Glasgow. The Connectivity Commission says that if this current partnership fails to increase patronage by 25%, which is a huge amount, then, and I quote, "The powers in the new Scottish Transport Bill should be deployed to regulate the network." This is what we want the council to commit to. And just to finish up with a quote from this report, "No partnership model, no matter how it is framed, can achieve the transformative change that is needed. It cannot enable a local authority to plan and deliver a comprehensive area-wide bus network. It cannot enable a single, easy-to-understand fare structure. It cannot allow timetables and services to be coordinated, cannot guarantee network stability and easy-to-find comprehensive information, and it cannot enable costs of concessionary fare payments to be brought under control." So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Miss Harrison. Could I just ask you to turn your microphone off now? Thank you. And we'll now ask Miss Christine Francis from the council to make her response. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, can I just say how great it is to see so many people interested in supporting transport in Glasgow? And I can just assure you that we actually, as officers, we share your passion and support of public transport as a strategic element of servicing the city. And we are working as hard as we can towards making Glasgow a safe and livable city with great public transport. There was a lot in what you said there, and what I'm going to do actually is I'm going to concentrate on the things that were bulleted in the petition which you asked for answers on and I've actually had a chance to look at and prepare for. So I'm going to concentrate on those things and just maybe give you some answers on the questions that you've put to us. First of all, you asked for a publicly-owned bus company for Glasgow, and we'd probably have to put out right away, as you've done yourself, that to achieve public ownership will require legislative change along with a really significant public sector funding commitment. So it's not currently within the powers of Glasgow City Council to deliver that without that legislative change. The Transport Scotland Bill which is currently going through Parliament does propose a number of additional powers for local authorities in relation to provision of bus services, and that includes powers in relation to transport authorities delivering services but only where an adequate service is not being provided by private operators. So those limited powers as they stand at the moment wouldn't allow us to run a commercially viable local bus operation. You're absolutely correct in saying that there are further powers proposed regarding local franchising and the establishment of partnerships with bus operators. And we are generally, as a council, we are supportive and we've expressed our support of those measures that are within the bill. And two of the priorities which are in the council's strategic plan for 2017 to 22 already are to explore the feasibility of a local bus franchising framework to deliver a more connected service across the city and to improve and refine the statutory quality partnership. So the council's already made that commitment in the strategic plan. Excuse me. We are committed to improving services provided by buses by all means currently within our powers. And with that in mind, we have recently started a voluntary bus partnership which has been set up with major bus companies operating within the city. We are wanting to work with them collaboratively, the bus operatives, the transport authority, other interest agencies and surrounding authorities. And in the absence of that significant funding, investment and regulation, and that's considered, I think, at the moment to be the best immediate solution to address some of the issues highlighted in the petition. So we are already trying, within the powers that are available to us, to start to address the issues that, that integrated ticketing solution. The technology to deliver the solution is already out there and is being employed individually by various public transport operators. So passengers can already use some of that technology to pay for bus journeys with credit card. Reel and subway passengers can pay for their travel via an electronic purse or mobile phone. And day capping has also been in place on Glasgow's subway for nearly five years now. However, we do accept that it's not fully integrated and we've got a long way to go working towards that. However, there's a number of issues, some of which include the wide range of private transport operators that are operating within the city and the commercial pressures that they operate under. So we still haven't arrived at that fully-integrated ticketing system yet, but we will continue to work with SPT and the public transport operators and Transport Scotland towards that goal of integrated smart ticketing. You asked for bike hire stations across the city with free access for concessionary As you're aware, we do have a very successful bike hire system within the city. And during the last year, we actually re-procured an extension to that existing scheme which will see the scheme expand to a minimum of 1,000 cycles located at 100 individual locations across the city. Since we launched that scheme in September 17, we've delivered 19 additional hire stations, bringing the total available locations to 63 across the city. Hire locations are being added all the time at a rate of about six a year with opportunities for more to be added and using external funding sources. And we're exploring those external funding sources to speed up the expansion of the scheme. It is a partnership arrangement with our commercial partner, Nextbike, to develop the scheme. The commercial partner does bear the cost of the operation, maintenance and expansion of the scheme, and as such, all decisions about the expansions are taken as a joint decision, looking at where we have identified a need for such a scheme and also looking at the commercial viability of that hire station as the operator has to be able to sustain that service over time. However, it's a partnership where we try and identify locations which will benefit the city as a whole. We would be very supportive of granting access to the scheme for concession cardholders, national entitlement cardholders. That scheme is operated and funded by Scottish Government through Transport Scotland and operational responsibility for that scheme sits with Transport Scotland and not with local authorities. We would be very happy though to facilitate discussions between Transport Scotland and Nextbike to investigate the feasibility of moving forward with a concessionary scheme. However, we would have to note at this point that the scheme, as it's operated by a private firm as a commercial entity, that it would incur costs which Transport Scotland would have to consider. However, we'd be very happy to try to facilitate discussions about the feasibility of that. Again, you asked for a publicly-owned transport authority for Glasgow with power over the entire network. You mentioned the Connectivity Commission, who were asked as an independent body to review transport issues affecting the city. And the first report was published in December 18 and dealt with issues under the jurisdiction of the council. The commission has been asked to go away and start, produce a second report which will deal with issues not wholly within council control, and we're envisaging that that will contain recommendations regarding the governance arrangements for the provision of transport within the Glasgow area. Again, we have to point out that the setting up of a publicly-owned transport authority would require a change in legislation. And lastly, I think you asked for a coordinated long-term vision and investment in the city's transport needs. The current governance arrangements with regard to the transport strategy have a very hierarchical approach with a national transport strategy sitting at the top of that hierarchy, a regional transport strategy developed by the Regional Transport Partnership which for Glasgow is SPT, and a local transport strategy produced by local authorities. There's a current update ongoing by SPT updating the regional transport strategy. And following on from the initial report from the Connectivity Commission, the council intends to produce a connectivity plan which will update and supersede our previous local transport strategy. That will set out our strategic approach to how people and commodities move into and around our city every day. It will set out a long-term vision and contain strategic actions to ensure Glasgow's connectivity, accessibility, attractiveness, resilience and mobility that they align with our world-class city ambitions which we share with you. The approved strategy will be developed through significant stakeholder and public involvement and will be used to inform future investment priorities. So there will be...
Thank you very much, Miss Francis. Do we have questions for the petitioner or for the officer? Chancellor Molyneux.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try and be brief. It's obviously a really huge topic. First, I'd just like to acknowledge the petitioner's persistence. I'm aware of how long it's taken for this petition to be heard. And you will be reassured that there is a review of the public petitions process underway, so I hope that in future when we have petitions of this scale that they do have the opportunity to be heard more formally within the council structures, a bit more readily. I know it's taken a while, but your persistence is admirable, and I think your priorities around integration, affordability, accessibility are absolutely the vision for public transport that I think we all hold. Certainly I hold and I believe colleagues would hold that as well. I'm also pleased that at various points you mentioned emissions, air pollution and a regional view on things, not just a city view on things, because I think they're also important. I guess coming to specific questions linked to your kind of five asks, on three, four and five, the responses from the council, I'm not saying they're fully in agreement, but there's broad agreement on the sense of we can do something about those things. On points one and two, particularly around publicly-owned bus company and integrated ticketing, that's the area where the response is, well, at the moment, we can't really do that because legislation doesn't allow us to do it. Actually, when you, or because the system's actually, when you pick into it, one of the reasons why we can't do the integrated ticketing is because we don't have the publicly-owned bus company. So I guess if there's one that has the major kind of shift, it would be that point on one. I guess in terms of how we take that forward, and I know your asks were about supporting an amendment to the bill. At the moment, I understand the bill is just at stage one in the Parliament, and stage two is the point at which amendments will be lodged. Now, they have to be lodged by MSPs. So, and I know in your initial comments you're saying bickering between political parties is letting Glasgow down. The reality of taking this forward is a politician is going to have to put an amendment forward into that process at stage two that hopefully will get support from other parties across the Parliament. And that is obviously out with, you know, the gift of councillors around this table, although we obviously have relationships with people who sit in the Scottish Parliament. I guess I'm interested in what engagement have you had already at the Scottish Parliament level with that aim? And do you get a sense that there will be amendments coming forward that can be supported? And I'll, my background on this is I brought a motion to another policy committee of the council to get the council to support amendments at stage two of the planning bill. And then one of the responses we got was, well, we couldn't really do that because we didn't, the amendments didn't exist yet, so as a council we couldn't support something that didn't exist. And I guess there's an issue with this here. So there needs to be, there needs to be a process by which an amendment comes forward. And I guess I'm just keen to say, where are you with that?
Miss Harrison.
Thank you. Yeah, so we have been watching the Transport Bill very closely since it was launched in June, and it's the Rural Economy and Connectivity Commission at the Parliament who are scrutinising it, and they took evidence between September and November last year. We weren't invited to give evidence, so we went and held a big rally outside the Parliament on the 3rd of October, calling specifically for an amendment that would allow us to set up a publicly-owned bus company for our region. So our intention really was to lobby the committee, the REC committee, so that they take into account our views. We also took them one of these, didn't have quite as many signatures, I think we had over 10,000 by then, we took that to them on 3rd of October. And we're expecting their report any moment now. It's meant to be the New Year, so I think it will be January or February. So we're really hoping that they will recommend that amendment, because actually I've got the bill here and it only requires removing one line, this thing about unmet need. So we keep in our fingers crossed that the committee themselves will recommend amending that. If they don't, then we're going to have to step up and, you know, that's at the stage when it's going to get more party political, which we're not looking forward to because we see this as, you know, such an important issue that it should transcend political divides. And so, yeah, we're just watching to see what the REC committee have to say before we go about looking about whether an amendment, they recommend it or we'll have to do that ourselves.
Chancellor McTernan.
Thank you. I also want to praise you on your persistence in getting here. I don't think it was ever a lack of desire for the committee to have you. I think we all know that council processes aren't always as slick and as smooth as they could be. And as my colleagues already said, we're going to be reviewing the petition process to try and address issues like yourselves where you've done clearly a substantial amount of work and you're representing probably many more views than the 10,727 you've got there. So thank you for coming and thank you for everyone else who's turned up today. Yeah, there is obviously the strand of things which are currently beyond the council's power. And I guess for me, that's something for us to take away because it's our colleagues, for all of us in the different parties, it's our colleagues who are in Holyrood debating this. And so for us to take, you'll be doing your lobbying, but for us to liaise with our colleagues to talk about the issues that you've raised. I think the regulation of buses in particular is so significant in Glasgow. It's not just about First Bus, we've got multiple bus companies, and that adds additional challenges when we're trying to come together. I particularly heard what you were saying about, I think it was Munich where they have one network, one timetable and one ticket. And I think for a lot of people who are regularly using public transport, or people who might use it more and are needing that nudge to get them on to it, the, not just the financial ease but the practical ease of things that you know that the subway and the train timetables of the train and the bus are kind of connected with each other. So I think whatever, I think, as I say, there's something for us to take away to liaise with our colleagues about the Transport Bill and to pick up on issues around, particularly around regulation of buses and buses for people, not profit primarily for the people. I think there's something for us at Glasgow. In the meantime, to be pushing as hard as we can for that integrated ticketing with a daily cap and transferable across the different modes of transport, because that's probably one of the biggest changes we could make, the best changes we could make to public transport in Glasgow. And I suppose I just want to pick up and support your point about equalities as well. I know that from an equalities impact assessment that was done for the wellbeing, not for the Environment Committee, for another piece of work, exactly what you said, it's not just that half of people in Glasgow don't have access to a car, it's that they tend to be women, older people, people with disabilities, BME communities, they tend to be people who are going to find it be more disadvantaged economically anyway, they tend to be people living in socio-economic disadvantage. So it's absolutely an equalities issue that we want to get public transport better, and I'm hopeful that the Connectivity Commission will pick up on that. So I guess as a proposal, I thought there are, because one of your asks is how can you be, or certainly what I'm taking from you is how can you be more, or you representing people in Glasgow, be more engaged and involved in our work of developing our policies in Glasgow? Our policies will definitely be better. Our policies will definitely be better for having you involved and engaged in a deliberative way, not just in giving kind of petitions and demands, but actually engaged and discussing back and forth. And the Environment Committee obviously has the remit for transport and issues like this. And I know that at their last meeting, because I sit on that committee as well, they're looking at developing a Transport Review Group and there's opportunities within that, I would think, to actually not just listen to what you're saying, but actually have some kind of dialogue and deliberative engagement with you around our transport and moving to what Miss Frances was talking about, our new connectivity plan, ensuring that we have genuine engagement, genuine discussion and debate around developing that plan. So I would propose that we ask the Environment Committee to take this on, to look at engaging with the Transport Review Working Group, engaging yourselves, representing people in Glasgow, to engage with the Transport Review Working Group with a view and the intention, whatever process they come up and say, but with the intention of having yourselves representing people engaged in the kind of ongoing policy discussion around this.
Councillor Butler.
Thanks very much, convenor. And can I first of all thank Ellie and her colleagues for coming along and presenting a very detailed and cogent case, all of which I happen to agree with. And I think most people would, because, I'll be very brief, the reality is that the buses, public transport is a kind of misnomer, it's a scandal and it is a rip-off and it has been for many, many years, since way back in terms of deregulation. And I do think that I would support the idea of a publicly owned bus company, integrated ticketing system, but those are the two areas where there has to be legislative change, you know that and we know that. And I would say that whatever we can do to push the aims of your petition and the petitioners and your campaign forward in the council, that's fine. And my colleague, Councillor McTernan, suggested a way that, you know, we refer it to another policy committee who then refer it to the Transport Review. But I'll ask you this question, I know that you said that, you know, you tried to get a consensus in the Parliament and that's a good thing, that can be done on occasion, I know it can be done through personal experience. But it might very well be that even though you achieve that consensus, you will need someone or a few members actually to push the wording at the actual committee. I take it you've got that in hand and that there are people of one party or all parties who are willing to support that at the committee, because that's the way to begin to get things done. Agitation, absolutely correct. Public petitions, good way, good model forward, but if you want to get legislative change, I do, and this is a question to you, ask you, you have got parliamentarians lined up, haven't you? Please say you have.
We did meet quite a few of the MSPs on the REC committee. We met Richard Lyle, MSP for Glasgow, we met-
Stuart Stevenson.
Stuart Stevenson. We met-
Gail.
Now, what was the name of, John Mason, Callum Met, John Mason. Particularly targeting the ones based in Glasgow and hopefully they've taken those views back in, into their report. We should have mentioned before, Ruth was whispering in my ear, we have to leave very promptly at half past two because we're going to Edinburgh to meet Michael Matheson, the Transport Minister. That's, we've been waiting for our meeting for about six months, so we're going to meet him at four o'clock today and, you know, we're going to go with the same demands that we brought to you. So first for the bill to be amended so that we have the option to have a publicly owned bus company for Glasgow, if that's not amended, you know, we might be waiting another 10 years before there's another transport bill. And also, we're going to demand some funding for, we want to be, we want, as we said, we want you to seize those franchising powers. This report outlines how powerful they can be for transforming a public transport network. That's how you deliver integrated ticketing. It's no use going, oh, we haven't managed to do it. You haven't managed to do it because you need those, to utilise those franchising powers to do it. So as soon as those come in with the transport bill, that should be the heart and soul of your transport policies thinking. And in terms of how you reconfigure the city centre, which is happening through the Avenues project at the moment, you need to use the franchising powers so that you're planning the bus routes while you're digging up the streets and reconfiguring how it all looks, like it all needs to work together. So we want you to seize those powers, tell Transport Scotland that you want to use those powers. And we want Glasgow to be the pilot, we want to show how transformative it can be if you use franchising. And we want Transport Scotland to fund it. So there's a similar process happening in Manchester at the moment because the Bus Act in England came in in 2017 and that gave powers to areas where they have mayors, like they have a new mayor in Manchester, to implement franchising. So we're in touch with a campaigner who's doing very similar work in Manchester to try and get the mayor, Andy Burnham, to implement those powers. And it's all about planning the network so that it runs for, so that it works for the people in the city and not for the private, the profit of the private bus companies. And if you look at this report, and I've actually got, I managed to get a few extra copies, to leave a couple with you. The only place in the UK where there's franchising in operation at the moment is London. And they, under Transport for London, the profits are capped at 2%. Bus companies are not allowed to make more than 2% profit. Elsewhere in the UK, profits are between 6 and 20%. The bus companies are taken out of the system, they're ripping off the poorest people in our society, they're taking that money out of the system. And that's why you save so much through public ownership or through franchising, because all of that can be reinvested in expanding and improving the network.
Your indulgence, Chair. Ellie, we're in danger of vehemently agreeing with each other here. Can I say to you that I've always believed that it is not a private concern, it is, it should be a public service. And as a socialist, I've always believed that, so there's no problem there. What I was asking that you though was that, all the arguments, yes, they all point to the common sense objective of doing what your campaign is saying should be done. But as you quite rightly say, we need legislation in the two areas in terms of integrated ticketing and publicly owned bus companies. I do accept in London, the regulation of the buses and franchising, the carton stick approach is a good way forward, it's, you know, some steps forward. But I want, I guess as most of you want or all of you want, publicly owned bus companies. But we do need the legislative clout to do that and when we get the legislative clout, I don't think we'll hesitate. So I'll come back to my question. My question is, do you have someone, not who's simply sympathetic, which is good, but who is willing to put in model amendments to the bill at the appropriate stage to make these two legislative demands flesh, to make it reality? It's just a, it's just a practical point, because you've got all the goodwill in the world, but unless you get an MSP or a couple MSPs or more than that to get their act together and maybe even just produce the wording for them, then it might fail and we wouldn't want that.
Yeah, well, stage two of the bill, I think, starts on the 1st of March. So between now and the 1st of March, you know, we're waiting for the REC committee report, we're seeing what they say and then we're, we'll be working on that. But the franchising powers are already in the bill. You know, our issue is with the bill is that it has this option for partnerships instead. You have to choose to utilise the franchising powers, they're in the bill. So that's what we want you to get behind, to see that as the, as the real, you know, what that could offer to the city and not to opt for, obviously what the bus companies want you to do is to go with this partnership, which means that they get to keep more of the profit for themselves. And they've all been, the bus companies have all been at the Parliament lobbying, we've seen them, like when we got to sit at the committee table for one of the REC committee stakeholder events, I sat at the table with the head of First, the head of McGill's, the head of Stagecoach, the head of the Confederation for Passenger Transport and the head of Lothian Buses as well. And they, they, they all just operated like a cartel. And had we not been sat at the table, then there would have been no passenger voice there at all. So that's why we've come to you to say, you know, these powers are there, we want you to seize them as part of the strategy for delivering the world-class public transport system that we want.
Miss Harrison, just, you're perhaps in danger of, you know, given that you're going to have to finish up by half two to get away to Edinburgh to see your Transport Minister, maybe want to keep quite brief. I've got a number of people now wishing to come in and so I'd ask them to be succinct. So I've got Councillor Rhodes, Councillor Kerr, Ms Low, Councillor Molyneux. Councillor Rhodes.
Thank you, convenor. It's a question for the officer in relation to the responses that you gave, where you made reference to the need for legislative change, whether we don't currently have powers to do things, such as the publicly owned bus company and so on. Does the council currently have a position or a view on whether or not it supports those legislative changes? And if not, is it possible for the council to take that view?
The council obviously has a view and is broadly supportive of all the measures that are in the bill at the moment. So we are supportive of increased powers for franchising, for partnerships, et cetera, all of those measures where we are supportive of. The ones that are not there at the moment, I think that's something that we are actually looking to the Connectivity Commission to flesh out. These are not going to be simple and easy things to do and I think it's something that that needs to have a lot more of a political leadership. We need to know what politicians want for that and whether they would be broadly supportive of it. So, yes, we have, we are broadly supportive of all the measures in the bill, but what I think Ellie is looking for is for the bill to go much further and I think we would be looking for political leadership on that one.
Councillor Kerr.
Thanks very much and I just want to say thanks to everybody who's came along today in this meeting, it just shows you the petition review that's obviously going on. If we can get the petitions working properly, this is the type of turn that we can have in meetings like this, which is really, really good. I just want to say, I agree with the sentiments of the petition, I think I've got some disagreements with some of the stuff, particularly around like public ownership and stuff like that, which I don't expect many people will be surprised by considering the party allegiances that I've got. But what I wanted to ask is a question more to the officers, obviously we've got the transport bill which is still going to the second stage, so we don't exactly know what's going to be in that yet. We've also got the Connectivity Commission which has released one report and I'm looking to the administration, has still got the second set of that report to come forward. So the question I'm really asking is, if we accepted to send this off to another committee right now, is it not just a bit early to be having this discussion where we don't know exactly what the Connectivity Commission's going to come back with, or the transport bill, or any of these other things? And it might be worthwhile actually taking it to a committee at some stage later on rather than at the current moment, because it might be a bit too early because we don't know what's going to happen in these other reports.
I think it is unfortunate timing in that we are, we are in this round where we have a regional transport strategy which is underway at the moment and won't be finished, I think, for another two years. We have the Connectivity Commission which hasn't completed its deliberations. So yes, I think the timing is unfortunate. Nevertheless, I think the bill itself, some of these things are so very much, it's common sense, I suppose, that we would be very supportive of them. But yes, the timing is a little bit unfortunate. Now, I think Ellie made a good point earlier on that if, if we don't get things through everything that we need in this transport bill, then there might well be a considerable time before the next one. So I think that having the discussion at this point is relevant and right that we should have that. And if there is a political desire for us to try and push the bill harder, then we would be happy to take that advice.
We have the convenor for environment sustainability-
...process. Certainly, I'm very open to dialogue and discussion on the council. I think hopefully we set that tone, looking at the non-residential parking levy discussion, whereby that was certainly something that came up as something that needs legislation and through the committee process we were able to find a council position on that. So certainly if this is something that members have a general feeling that we should be discussing further, as Miss Frances says, there does need to be a political decision to be made. And I'm very open to continuing that conversation around how the council may wish to change its position on any particular aspects of the bill as it goes forward. I don't want to commit any position here, my opinion is only my opinion and I think the democratic process means that it has to be a much more in-depth and wider conversation. But as I say, I'm open and I'm certainly happy to continue the discussion wherever that might be appropriate.
Thank you. Ms Low.
Thank you very much, Ellie, I thought your presentation was excellent and I represent the community councils in Glasgow. I'm Chair of Townhead and Ladywell Community Council and your frustration is shared by me because we've, we're currently in a place where we're trying to find better public transport for our area and for the Drygate area and we're coming across a very closed door. So there are many areas in Glasgow of multiple deprivation that depend upon accessible and integrated transport to address the inequalities in Glasgow. I know that as Chair of Townhead and Ladywell Community Council, I give you my full support. I'd like to propose that we take your petition to all the community councils at the next Community Council Development Forum and give it an airing there. In that way, we will widen the conversation amongst the general public, if that's acceptable.
I think that's an eminently sensible suggestion and that will widen out the consultation and just the publicity around this issue. I think we all individually understand the issue, but I think widening it out and actually, you know, showing people that we can make a difference, I think that's important. So thank you for that. Ms Barry.
Hi, my name's Lorraine Barry, I'd like to present the Glasgow Equalities Forum and I just wanted to chip in that our members, Glasgow Disability Alliance, have many concerns about accessibility. Many of their members may well have signed your petition and particular issues have been around the lack of accessibility in the subway particularly. So we would support the work that improves accessibility. I'm not sure if it's a question or a comment, but we've heard about local and national strategies and bills, but the community plan hasn't been mentioned and the community plan, one of its work streams is transport. Now, we all probably know that the Community Empowerment Act actually gives communities the right to be involved in determining legislation from the inception right through to the passing of legislation. And I wonder if, certainly in terms of the community plan, we're in, the Equality Forum is involved in the resilience strategy and we have been consulted and involved in that, but we don't feel that the community inequalities involvement is quite as it should be in all the five streams. And certainly we don't have a great deal of contact in terms of transport. So one, there should be community voices right embedded in that strategy and two, is that an avenue you can pursue? You know, we shouldn't be having consultation events when there's a group of interested citizens who want to be involved and are engaged in the issue already, just making that suggestion.
Mr Anderson's just telling me that under community planning, he'd be able to move that on, you know, to actually engage with that. So I'm not sure, you're clearly going to be pressed for time, Ellie, that's now half past. Councillor Molyneux did indicate he wanted another bite of the cherry, so, and I did indicate that I would allow that, but he will be incredibly brief, I'm sure.
You're very kind, Chair. I will be brief, so-
I will be brief, so the point on amendments that need to come forward at stage two, members of this council could bring a motion, either at full council or through policy committee, to support those, but obviously, like I say, we need them to exist, so I think that's something that elected members can bring forward another time. It was a question really for Ms Francis on whether are provisions currently in the draft bill, like franchising, that petitioners want us to be preparing for to use, at what point would officers normally start preparing for provisions that are coming in new legislation? So have we started doing work on the potential use of franchising, and if not, would we be starting that imminently? Or do we wait until the whole legislation's passed, because we don't know whether it's going to pass or fall, before we actually start looking seriously at the detail of how we apply those provisions?
It's very difficult at this point in time to progress any detail for these things, because we don't know at this time what the bill is actually going to bring forward, what powers it's actually going to give us. I think in addition to that, this would be a major shift in the way that we do things, it would be a really huge piece of work to start to look at introducing franchising, so it would need considerable resources and considerable time spent on it, and to do that, we'd really have, we'd have to be really sure of what we could do and what the powers actually were that were given to us and how it could be applied. So rather than waste time and resources on preparing something that may be abortive, we would wait and to see what the details are of the powers that come through the transport bill.
Thank you very much. I think with that, I think we should probably conclude. I think what I would say is that certainly the sense in the room is that you're pushing an open door, there's absolutely no demoral of the, what we need is an integrated transport system and improvements to the franchising models. Clearly, there's some issues around the community councils, and Ms Law has very kindly offered to widen out the petition you've brought, effectively the issues you've brought to our community councils. Ms Barry, with Mr Anderson's help, is going to take that through community planning, that there is, you know, certainly the Environment Sustainability Committee are well cited on this, and while I understand there was some potential of perhaps a working party, that's not the case yet, as I understand it. However, that, if that comes to pass, almost certainly that would be a piece of work that they'd be asked to do. I've got councillor McTernan asking to come in.
So just, I guess, to, I said, I propose that we actually formally refer it to the Environment Committee, so I guess I'd like to move that as a motion, that we formally refer this to the Environment Committee, so that that, effectively, we want this to be part of our policy discussion, and with the question of can it then be referred on to the Transport Review?
I'll say.
Actually, just wanted to add to that, and I know we can also omit to other organisations, and we obviously do already have a publicly owned transport authority in the form of SPT, and they are relevant to a number of these points, so my suggestion is we refer it onwards, both to the Environment Committee and to SPT.
Thanks, Chair. I think, given the recent discussions, I think the best place for it would probably be the Connectivity Commission, as an independent body that's already considering transport needs around the city, probably to recommend that to them. I would like to formally move that.
Ms Law?
Can I just get a point of information that by referring it to all these other committees, it doesn't preclude it coming back to this committee?
It wouldn't come back to, excuse me, to this committee. If it was going anywhere, it would go on to the City Administration Committee, or, you know, if you like, higher, so it wouldn't necessarily come back to us.
Well, then, in that case, can we provide some sort of a mechanism for community councils to be kept abreast of where it's at? If we're going to go down the road of engaging with them and consulting with them?
I am told by the officer on my left that if I tell him to do that, it will be so. With that, I think we should conclude, but thank you very much, thank you, Ms Harrison, thank you all those that came with interest, this was a very interesting petition, thank you for that.